Sorry. Hi Brad, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, it's seven thirty-one. Uh, in attendance is Randy, I'm just gonna name first names, Randy Corey, uh, Dimitri, uh, Dennis, Brad, and then, uh, alternates are.
I'm not.
Uh, Mary, uh, alternate is, is, uh,
John.
John, thank you. Um, and, uh.
Hi, and Brian.
And Brian.
There's Brian.
And Dennis is here, uh, and, um, Andrea is absent, she's traveling. Alright, uh, review, uh, uh, the meeting's been called to order, review of April minutes, uh, and June minutes, so let's take May first, does it, let's take May's first, does anyone have any comments or, or items that they want to address in the May minutes? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the May minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the May.
Dimitri made a motion, can I have a second?
Oh, certainly.
Randy seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, uh, unanimous, uh, unanimously passed, uh, the June, uh, twenty twenty-five minutes, are there any comments or, uh, things that you'd like to add to those? Hey, not hearing and even have a motion to approve the June twenty twenty-five minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Dimitri made a motion to approve, seconded? Randy seconded? Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No po- no oppositions, um, so that passes unanimously also. Okay, I'll take over for Andrea since she's, uh, gone, uh, it's pretty easy, uh, there have been no changes to, uh, the budget or expenses since last, last month. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Uh, chairman's report. CSA update, uh, I've gotten comments from, uh, uh, O-line, I've made my comments, uh, and O-line Shores, Old Colony are working on, on theirs, they are going to, uh, get an attorney to review the document, um, as there were extensive changes to it, and they just wanna make sure that, uh, their interests are protected, so it's going to take a little longer than I thought, I wanted that, all the comments back by this, uh, before, uh, July third, um, but I did not get them, so, uh, that's about it, I still expect that the CSA will certainly be completed and signed prior to, uh, referendum. Sewer project status, uh, the deep authorized Miami Beach to play, put out their project to bid last week, um, they're in the process of doing that now. Um, O-line Shores, I haven't been able to get a status, Jay is traveling, uh, out of country and, um, on vacation, and I'm not going to buck him while he's away, so, O-line Shores, uh, was in the same position as, as Miami Beach as far as being a deep for approval, um. I haven't received anything from deep saying that they were approved, so, um, it still may be a deep. Um, referendum status. So we are going to referendum, uh, there have been changes to the, to the timeline, uh, because of, cuz the town can't do it when, when requested, I guess, um. So the new timeline is, uh, it looks like the Board of Selectmen will vote at the August nineteenth meeting, and, I'm sorry, the August eighteenth meeting, and, uh, the Board of Finance will, will weigh in on August nineteenth. Um, on August eighteenth at six thirty, they'll, in the Lime, O-line High School Auditorium, there'll be a, uh, public meeting for informational session on the Soundview Sewer Project. On September second, six thirty PM, Lime O-line High School Auditorium, there'll be a town meeting to move the Soundview Sewer Project request for additional funding to referendum. On September ninth, twelve PM to eight PM, Lime O-line Middle School Gymnasium will hold the town referendum for voting. Uh, those are the dates. Um, I'm working on a presentation I will send to every member this month prior to August meeting, you can review and comment at the August meeting. Um, that's, that's it for the referendum. And then I guess there was an informational meeting, so I will have an informational meeting, uh, it'll be PowerPoint, I'll send it to everyone, they can review it, uh, between, when I send it in the meeting, I'll try to have it completed in the next week or two. Um, it's only, uh, I, I'm not, I'm really not gonna get into, uh, I'm not gonna get into the history of the sewers in this meeting, if you don't know the history of the sewers by now, um, I don't know what to say. It's gonna be more directed on why we should go out to referendum requests, another seven point six million dollars, and, uh, how it would affect the town. Um.
So you expect by August sixteenth, when you have a scope of meeting, you'll have all the financial information that you need?
I have all the financial information.
So you don't need the information from O-line Shores and Miami Beach?
No.
Because that doesn't change the percentage of what Soundview would be paying?
Correct. I don't, I don't understand. Who, what? They're doing an internal project, Miami Beach internal, O-line Shores internal, how does it affect our internal project or the shared project?
Well, we, we are in fact twenty-nine point seven with, uh, four entities involved. One entity drops out and we then become thirty-six percent or thirty-seven percent. That would increase our cost in regard to the share.
That's, that's true, but then we would be over referendum and we wouldn't be able to do the project.
Pardon me?
We would be over referendum amount and we wouldn't be able to do the project.
We would not, right?
Right.
So, I would, okay, I mean, I'll take it up, but I would think.
I can't control, Mary.
To present at the public meeting all of the financial information.
I am, I am presenting all of the financial information that would affect old line citizens.
Okay.
Yes, if, if Miami Beach and O-line Shores drops out, the numbers change, but that's not, that's not a consideration at this point, Mary.
I would ju- I would beg to differ.
Well, you can beg to differ all you want.
Thank you.
They're, they are, they, Miami Beach is going back out to bid.
I know.
Okay, so why do you think that they're gonna drop out?
I don't, I don't know that, I don't know what they are, I don't know if they're not, I don't know what their bids are gonna come in to be. I don't know, I don't know what O-line Shores bids will come in to be.
Neither do I, but it doesn't affect the calculations for O-line Citizens.
Okay, I guess I, I, again, respectfully disagree with that, if we are twenty-nine point seven of the shared and one of the four drop out, obviously we're gonna be more than twenty-nine point seven of the shared. That will affect our numbers.
I don't, I don't think that, number one, I don't think the DEP is going to let them drop out, as you say, um. They're under consent order to put sewers in.
To do something, yes.
No, they're under consent order to put the sewers in.
Here to argue with you, Steve, I'm just expressing my opinion.
Okay, well, thank you for your opinion.
Thank you. Let's move on.
So, we have, O-line has all the financial information that's required to present for the referendum. Uh, we would be capped out at seventeen point one million dollars of spending authority. If we, we can't go over that amount, so if someone dropped out, our, our percent goes up and we'd either have to go back out to referendum or the, the project becomes unviable. I don't, I don't know what to say, no one has indicated that any entity is backing out and not bidding. So I assume they're all going to bid and they're all going to get responsive bidders. And whatever those numbers are in those internal projects won't affect our costs.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, as far as, um, for forgivable loan, why are we twenty-five percent when we are twenty-nine point seven?
We're not, we're twenty-nine point seven percent, at least every, everything that I've seen is twenty-five percent. Right, so the way the forgivable loan works is that the DEP is going to disperse the forgivable loan based on the percentages in the CSA. We are twenty-nine point seven percent. As a matter of fact, that the portion of the forgivable loan is rolled into our internal infrastructure at the end, five loans become four. The, the, the percentages of the shared infrastructure are rolled in the, of, of, of the amount being financed, if it's, would be rolled into twenty-nine point seven for us, twenty, I, I don't know the other percentage, just twenty-one, twenty-nine point seven percent for us. I don't, what, what, I don't know what Old Colony, I don't know the other ones because I'm not really concerned about them, they all add up to a hundred percent. So if ten million dollars, uh, was, was financed, we would owe two point nine seven million dollars of that, and that would be rolled into our internal infrastructure loan. So there is no shared infrastructure loan at the end.
Well, I would suggest that, that any information that OCB comes out with should re- really show those percentages on their clean water funds because they're club, um, uh, showing twenty-five percent for everybody for the four entities, so.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure.
I want to talk.
I, I'll talk to them because I, I know how the contract, the DEP contract is written and it's twenty-nine, it's the percent, it doesn't say anything, it says it's going to be rolled in as a percent of what's written in the CSA, okay, so it's twenty-nine point seven percent for us.
So may I ask, since it's past June thirtieth, has everybody agreed in writing to extend the current bids, received bids?
I believe so.
Yeah, you have that in writing, there's no.
I have hours, I, me- Mary, I have hours in writing in, in the shared infrastructures. I don't have, I don't, I'm not concerned with Old Colony Beach.
Okay, I understand that you're not concerned with Old Colony, but the three parts of the infrastructure, those three contracts have been extended without increase?
Those, those three contracts have been extended with an inflationary clause.
And what is that?
It's, it goes off of what the price of, of materials is on whenever the bid date close, cuz that's when to, to October fifteenth.
Okay, so we don't know what that is right now?
I know that it's minimal.
Okay, and you're gonna put that into your chart, you're gonna calculate that?
I'm not, I'm not going to do that because there is, uh, close to a million, I think a million or million, one point four million dollars or one point eight million dollars worth of contingency, and this is a extremely small portion of what it could be, it's not on the whole contract, it's only on materials. So they would have to prove that out of the, the, the materials that they were gonna purchase, the percent that they went up and they would get that.
And that's all been signed and delivered to Woodward and Curran?
We are not handling the shared infrastructure, Woodward and Curran is not the engineer for the shared infrastructure.
I mean, to Fussin' O'Neil, excuse me.
I, I believe it's all been signed and delivered to Fussin' O'Neil. I get a letter from Fussin' O'Neil saying that this is, this, every contractor has agreed to, to go forward, some with inflationary clauses, some without. Um, so unless they're lying.
No, no, I'm just asking because last month you said the pump station was quote up in the air.
As far as I know, that's now been agreed to.
But it's been resolved.
It's been resolved.
And the low bidder is still going to, to do the pump station, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's, uh, yes, Rainmaker, I think.
Rainmaker was the second.
Second.
He was not the low bidder.
Um, the, the, uh, mechanical place in Middletown.
Oh, yeah.
Turner. Turn- no.
Not Turner, it wasn't Turner.
Begins with T.
Anyway, it wasn't, it was not Rainmaker, there are only two bids on the Forest Main, Rainmaker was second highest, was the higher bid. So it was a question last month, if, if that.
So I will, I will, uh, send an email to Kurt Mailin, who is, uh, my contact to Fussin' O'Neil.
Okay.
And I will ask, uh, for updated numbers before I give the press, before you guys see it again.
That'd be great, that'd be great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, Doug. But, but.
Is there any other expenses carried over from prior times that we will be charged at Poissons View and Area B? That perhaps O-line Old Colony is carrying for us?
Yes, yes.
Do we know what that is?
Yes, it's, it's, if, have you looked at my worksheet?
I have, looked at all your worksheets, yes.
Because it's right in there.
This worksheet? This one?
Let me see it, uh, I, I.
It has a lot of writing on it, uh, it says contingency is five percent, not, it says contingency four twenty-seven. Uh, engineering services, uh, design stage.
How about look, how about looking at the shared infrastructure portion of that?
Okay.
What do you see there?
Uh, I see Forest Main and Biocide nine eight nine three. Shared trunk, these are the bids, sample bids.
Yeah, what else do you see?
I see a pump station, uh, five percent contingency versus, I guess usually it's ten or twenty.
No, it's not.
Um, I see a design and contract administration.
Design and contract, yes, that's.
What is that, is that?
That's, that's what, so I'm looking at, no, no. Alright, shared infrastructure, you have, you have your, your hard costs up above which are, which are bids.
Mm-hmm.
Five percent contingency, almost a million dollars, that's just for change orders that may come up. Highly unlikely that we're gonna have a million dollars in change orders, design and contract administration, that is, uh, that is the number, and I think that's gone up, I think it's, I, I think that number has gone up, so I will ask, but I think that is what it costs to design and then administer the contract.
Is that Fussin' O'Neil or?
That's Fussin' O'Neil.
Fussin' O'Neil.
That's Fussin' O'Neil. That would be analogous to our, uh, our, well, we, we broke it out, design stage and engineering services, alright, that one point six million, I don't know what part of that was, and is engineering and what part is design stage, but that's, that's what that is.
That EDSC, the breakdown, it's designed versus services during construction.
Correct.
Yeah.
I just don't know what they are, I was given a number.
No, I just.
So yes, we'll be responsible for twenty-nine, really, twenty-nine point seven percent of half that number.
Or some portion, yeah, um, and then what is owed to, I know Old Colony took out like a four million dollar bond, what part of that do we owe?
None, as far as I know.
Forty million, I guess they took out.
They authorized, I believe they authorized forty million dollars of borrow,
Mm-hmm.
Of which will finance their, uh, internal sewer.
Mm-hmm.
And the shared sewer project.
So we don't owe anything to Old Colony at this point?
Uh, well, I would imagine that we owe twenty-nine point seven percent of whatever the design costs were on, on the shared infrastructure.
Design, legal?
I would say design, we've paid, we've paid legal, we've paid everything but the design. We're a full voting member of the CSA, we, we paid them in two payments, one I think was sixty thousand dollars, one was around fifty that this board, uh, approved last year, they were paid, um, and those were twenty, those represented twenty-nine point seven percent of all the other costs not reimbursable by CWF.
So we don't, the only thing we owe to Old Colony, you're saying regardless of whatever else they spent on legal or obtaining a lot.
I'm saying we've paid legal.
Pardon?
We've paid the legal.
Okay, so we don't owe anything else to Old Colony?
Not that I'm aware, are you aware of other numbers that I'm not?
I'm asking you, Steve, you're, you're.
Mary, I'm asking you a question, it's a valid question, are you aware of outstanding, uh, monies that we owe Old Colony that I am not?
Well, I understand they took out a forty million dollar bond.
Okay.
Twenty-nine point seven, there should be.
No, it's not, it's not, we don't owe twenty-nine point seven percent of forty million, it's only of the shared infrastructure.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that, but of that, part of that forty million must have been used toward the shared infrastructure.
No, that, so.
Okay.
So this is the way CWF funding works. They are bonded, they took, they, they didn't borrow, they don't have a forty thousand, forty million dollar bank account, they don't have any money. CWF funds the, the work as it goes, so Fussin' O'Neil does design work, Old Colony fills out the requisition, or Fussin' O'Neil fills out the requisition, Old Colony approves it, sends it up to DEP, DEP gives Old Colony a check to pay, uh, uh, Fussin' O'Neil for design services, alright? What the bond is in, in this town and in each of the other beach associations is really an authorization to spend.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
It has nothing to do with, with floating debt around, the, the clean water fund is the one that floats the debt and carries the risk, I guess, because they're giving the money out. With, there's no money, there's, this is not, uh, and then, and then we pay two percent, which replenishes the fund and allows them to, to, to loan the money again.
Right, I, I guess I'm just concerned because I keep hearing in the PBAs about how much interest has accrued already on the loans that they've had to take out, and are we responsible for part of that?
Uh, we're responsible for, for accrued interest, I would assume. But you, you say it's forty million, is it exactly forty million?
I don't know, Steve.
Right, I, that's, so, Mary, Mary, I, yes, interest has accrued, uh, but, but the amount that's been spent so far is not forty million, it, it's not even close.
I'm just asking if it's all reflected in your numbers, if it is, that's great.
It's, these are the last numbers I had, i- if, if I made a mistake, um, then I will, I will certainly make sure that the numbers are correct and hold a special meeting to get more money for referendum. But I don't believe I've made any mistakes, any, I, I believe there probably are inaccuracies in these numbers. But I do not believe they, they, they amount to point five percent, point five percent, half a percent of anything in here, it's, it's impossible for, I mean, I would have to have a formula in here to track, well, I'd have to know exactly how much was borrowed, um, and then have a formula to track how much is accrued interest so that this thing is correct all the time. Um, it's two percent a year on, on four million dollars, I don't, in, in twenty-nine point seven percent of that, it's not, we're not talking, uh, anything substantial that would affect, uh, our numbers, our numbers, by the way, we carry, uh, we're carrying four hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars for our internal infrastructure, um, which is, which is a lot of money considering what is the possibility of the type of change orders you can get down there. There's nothing in the ground, um, it's not like going into, uh, Hartford and trying to dig around gas pipe and water pipe and pipe that isn't marked or anything else, whatever is down there, we know, it's indicated on the plans, um. I don't, I don't, I think five percent is, is a very, very safe number. But if, if you are aware of any outstanding numbers that I have not accounted for, I think it's, uh, your duty.
My duty.
To tell me, yes.
Assume that since Old Colony is handling all the funds for the shared infrastructure, there would be a monthly spreadsheet on what's been spent, what's been owed, what's been received. You don't see that, yeah, as a member now, as a paid member
Yeah.
of the alliance or whatever you call them now, do you see that, do you get that spreadsheet?
I, I don't even have a spread, no, I have not seen that. Uh, uh, would, what would you, that, that is something that we're, we are working towards, alright?
Okay, let's move on, I guess.
We, we don't have a signed CSA agreement.
I know. So you paid membership into the alliance, right?
Alright, we've, we have paid membership into the alliance.
And so as a member of the alliance, you would be eligible to receive information from the alliance and what's been spent.
It, it hasn't, it hasn't been, it has not been a, a lack of, well, I, I will say that Frank hasn't sent me the bank statements that I requested, but it hasn't been for lack of, of Frank withholding information, I haven't asked him for it, alright, uh, I, it hasn't been a high priority of mine, uh, I know the numbers, I got the numbers from Frank, I mean, those numbers came from Frank, uh, but, uh, I will ask for, for uh, an accounting of, of the shared infrastructure portion, um, a more detailed, I should say, the numbers came from Frank Nollie that I used in my documents, so, I don't know, four million dollars, that could be true, I don't know how much they spent on design services and engineering services on the internal infrastructure.
Are you talking about the four point one by twenty twenty-two or, or four point one today, I, I'm not sure.
I, I don't know what you're, I don't even know what you're referring to, you said, Frank said they, they incurred four million dollars in costs.
No, Rich Pendergast said that.
No, okay, so I'm, I'm going to settle that right now also, Rich Pendergast, I believe, I'm not rich, so I can't speak for him, but what Rich was saying in an article that said there had been four point one million dollars spent or, or four million dollars spent on this project was referring to all of it.
Right.
Our costs, Miami Beach cost, O-line Shores cost, and Old Colony's cost.
Absolutely.
And the shared infrastructure cost.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so what, O-line Shores and Miami Beach and Old Colony had design and engineering costs, okay, I don't know how much they were, but if, if it were four point one million then, and, and you took twenty-five percent of four million for each of those entities, then Old Colony were twenty percent. We, we, they spent around a million dollars for the shared infrastructure.
I guess that's what we need to see, is that kind of accountability. What Pendergast said was they spent four point one million and that it will be proportionately rolled into the final loan amounts that each of the four entities will borrow for their own sewer construction costs. But I don't see that in yours, in these numbers, um, so I, I, you know, I don't know.
Well.
I don't know if we really spent four point one million because nobody seems to have an accounting of it, I don't know. I'm just reading what I'm reading in the paper, I don't have the privileged information.
I don't, uh, Mary.
I don't.
I, I've explained to, what, what the, I will get the information for the shared infrastructure. That's it.
Okay.
I don't care about Miami Beach, O-line Shores, or Old Colony, I'll find out how much the shared infrastructure has spent. I don't care about Miami Beach, O-line Chores, or Old Colony, I'll find out how much the shared infrastructure has spent. I believe it's sixteen, one point six million. It may have gone up a little, but at the time that I got the numbers, it was one point six million.
And that's reflected in in this?
That's reflected in that sheet, design and engineering services.
Oh, I thought that would, it says design and contract administration.
Design and contract administration, yes.
I thought that was payable to Fussit O'Neill, right? Or no, not to Old Colony for other expenses that they had, this is just going to Fussit O'Neill.
Those are the costs that Old Colony will have to pay Fussit O'Neill. For the shared design and engineering services, we will have to reimburse Old Colony twenty nine point seven percent of that number. Do you understand that?
It'd be great to see the spreadsheet, thank you for trying to get it, I appreciate it.
Do you have any reservations of putting this project to one man in one. Uh, organization, what happens to him if he dies? I don't understand the question, we don't, we do not send a check to Old Colony, ever. We will never send a check to Old Colony for this project.
I thought it was on usage, we we have to.
No. Nope, it won't be, okay.
I think we need to read the, read the, um, New London and. Agreement again.
Okay.
Read it, we'll read it, we'll go back and read that.
Yeah, the New London Agreement was was specifically, there's a statement in there specifically. For planning ahead that we put in this time around that says Old Colony. Or or another entity can be transferable, by the time the project is done, we will have a uh, an entity. In a maintenance and operations agreement, that that entity will will administer the whole project, the whole system.
Right.
Shall I say, so it won't go to Old Colony.
It'll be paid, someone who's paid, a town employee.
No, it may not be a town employee, it may be someone that before WPCAs hired to do that work. It doesn't have to be a town employee. Are there any other questions? So I don't have a problem, by the way, of of Frank Knowie or Old Colony. Uh administering the contract, uh, you know, there's there's, it's not, it, number one. The way it works, again, is the engineer certifies the work has been done, certifies the requisitions correct. Gives it to the WPCA, the WPCA votes, yes, we'll pay it, no, we won't. Once it's voted yes, it goes up to the state DEP for review. It could get bounced back because of a mistake, usually, they don't make mistakes. The, if it's, let's say, ten million dollars uh requisition, the DEP will write us a check. For ten, well, we'll write Old Colony a check for ten million, uh, ten million dollars to pay the contractors. They will debit the account five million dollars. Because fifty percent is forgiven, basically, grant forgiven, um, and at the end, whatever that account. Says we owe, it's broken out twenty nine point seven percent, or based on the percentages and rolled into our individual. Uh, loan values, okay, alright, so we don't pay Old Colony anything.
I just have a, a terrible thought, and I've seen his bookkeeping. And you're talking sixth grade math. We're talking millions. This is, this is something that's never been tried in this town.
I, I'd like to stop you there, because this is a public meeting, uh, the DEP. Feels as though the individual we're talking about is capable of doing this, or else they wouldn't have loaned. The the group, now, Old Colony is responsible for the forty million dollars, they're responsible for it. We didn't sign, though. Doug thinks that we signed that document as a co-signator, but I know we haven't, I know I haven't. And I don't think the town has, so I don't know why he thinks that, okay, um, but, you know. On any given month, on a twenty million dollar project that's gonna last sixteen months. Or. Twenty months, let's say it's gonna last twenty months, it's a million dollars a month that's requisitioned. On average, um, if the contractor doesn't get paid in July for June, there's no more work being done. It stops there, so there is a a definite. Risk uh avoidance by the parties involved. That even if someone were to think about taking the money. There's only, they can't get twenty million dollars, they can only get what's requisitioned, and. I I don't know, I I just don't see uh any, I I mean, it's, I've seen that happen, I mean, an engineering firm actually. Uh, once had a guy embezzle six million dollars and leave the country, um, but, uh. I don't see that happening, there's a lot of checks and balances, get involved in this. New business, oh no, uh, well, I guess new business, it's a sewer ordinance, um. What did I do in the sewers, um, the sewer, oh, the sewer ordinance has been uh sent to uh. Our town attorney for markup, uh, everyone was sent to sewer ordinance, it's been reviewed by the public. Had a, a thought, it's.
Reviewed by the public in twenty twenty two or when, twenty twenty two?
Whenever it was, twenty, I don't think. I think it was twenty twenty.
Whenever Frank Chan was here.
No, Frank Chan wasn't here for this.
No, it wasn't April twenty twenty two.
Great, it was April twenty twenty two, that was reviewed by the public, it's been sent, uh, I don't know why, we just didn't pass it then. I mean, it seemed to me, it was done, we had a couple of comments to incorporate, and we would have, we would have gone out. Uh, that's where we're at now, uh, the attorney's making changes to to the document, and I plan on getting it. Up on a town meeting to be passed.
So I think the ordinance has had some changes made to it since twenty twenty two, correct? And so has the, yeah, uh, yes.
After, after public comment, after public comment, after those comments were incorporated, nothing's been done to it.
Such a headache, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're telling me.
Oh, yes, yeah, right, so I have some concerns about the ordinance, if I may. Or if it's too late, we can't change it because it's already in the hands of the attorney.
I I would, I would like, uh, did you get it?
Yes, and I got it because you sent it last month, and so I read it when you sent it.
You didn't comment on it before it was going to the attorney?
When what? I thought we were gonna talk about it, it's on the agenda for tonight. So I thought it was open for discussion for tonight as an agenda item, but if not, that's fine.
It's on there, I'd like to hear your comments, really.
Great, um, okay, unfortunately, I don't have a printer, so I couldn't print off the whole ordinance, but I will tell you. What, some of the comments, if you don't mind.
Sure.
When you first start off, you you define, you identify, you say this is a town ordinance, right? And in that town ordinance, you're designating a sewer district in the footnote. It stipulates a full, a sewer district, and it stipulates that Soundview, Area B, and Hawksness are part of that sewer district. That part alone is a little bit confusing to me, if it's a town ordinance, but directed to a sewer district. And I'll tell you why, because in a district, like a fire district, if uh Rob was here. The, only the people in the district get to vote on items, financials, et cetera, decisions on that district, just like the PBAs. So if we are a district, if you make us a district in this document, in this ordinance, we're the only ones who get to vote.
Yeah, it's a town ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, I've asked uh the attorney, that's one of the things that I've asked him to look into.
Thank you, yeah.
If it's a town ordinance, does it take precedence over every WPC now? You know, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but that's what he's been basically assigned by me. Is determining the applicability to uh. Wherever, if it's a town ordinance, all the townspeople get to vote on it.
Okay, great, so that was my second question, have you asked an attorney's opinion on that? And would it then, if it is a town ordinance versus just a, uh, sorry. A district, then does it apply to the PBAs as well? Because you're building something jointly with the PBAs, if you're, if you're building an ordinance, trying to get an ordinance passed. To protect that something that you're building, it should encompass all the users of that system, not just a sewer view.
Well, I, I, I think it should be a townwide ordinance that's applicable to to everyone, um. I mean, the ordinance can spell out sewer districts and not, and not have, uh, and and not be in. And still have the whole town vote on it. Um, but, the reason that's, the reason that's in there is because we are still a sewer avoidance town. We're a sewer, we are a sewer avoidance town, we did not purposely go out, set about, to to sewer Soundview. If you wanna know the history.
No, no.
Bonnie Reinschneider was the one that asked the DEP to come in to get us sewers. That's where it began, Bonnie ran on getting sewers in Soundview. And she won, and so she fulfilled her her uh obligation to the voters of Soundview.
So, back to the ordinance, I have to say that the definition and the ordinance of a of a lateral is a little bit confusing. And I think that what, I know, I understand what you're trying to say, but it's confusing, and we've talked about this last month. And I think in the ordinance, you should separate the two, like, just call it a pipe, the pipe from the the house to the, to the curb. Versus a lateral from the house to the curb and the lateral, which is part of the system. Which is in the road connected to the main, force main or wherever it's connected, I don't think you should use those two interchangeably, it's too confusing.
They're not used interchangeably.
No, any ordinance, if you read it, it kinda, to me, it's confusing.
Okay.
Okay.
You, I wanna say about it, first of all, the town is responsible for the law. And uh, state trusts the town. We cannot have Soundview be responsible for the law, so all people in the town should be participating. They trust only the town. So this is the, this is the, the situation we have. You cannot get only people voting on the money state will give us. And have waters only people who are gonna have the job, that's why the town is responsible.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, I can't tell you the definition of a district and the responsibilities.
Really, it's a responsibility. Here is the responsibility.
So.
They trust on the town.
So, Mary, the definition of a lateral is from the house to the street. That's the definition of a lateral.
To the street?
To to the, to the main, in the street.
To the main.
To the main, that's the definition of a lateral, what we've defined there is correct, it's a lateral. Now, we're responsible to fix it from the property line to the main, because we consider that town property. From the property line to the house is the owner's responsibility.
I understand.
Okay, so it's all one lateral, though.
Okay, I just think it would have been clearer to have it two different terms.
We, we did have two different terms, and and we changed it after public comment, I think it was called a house stream, if I'm not mistaken.
In the next section of the ordinance.
I mean, it's, it it just, it's a universal term in in sewer systems. To refer to the lateral as the the line from the house to the main. And the the division is, you know, it it is clear and almost, I mean, it is at the MDC, it is everywhere I've ever worked.
Set middle town.
There's two, it's two separate pipes, so, right, like, I have one pipe going to the curb, which is my pipe?
No, it's one pipe, it's all one pipe.
Okay.
You own, you own from the curb to the house.
Right, but, from the curb to the house, right, I have one pipe, I hire my installer to come put one pipe in from my house.
Hook into the one that's already sitting there, that was installed by.
I have my guy come install one pipe in my basement to the curb.
Yep.
That's my pipe. And the lateral is connected to the main, and whoever wins the bid for the for, for the main will put that lateral in.
The, the lateral exists already.
Is what?
The lateral exists, it goes from the main to wherever you pick on your property, and then. You know where it is, it's marked with a stake, and then your contractor comes in, hooks up to that.
So the guy who wins the bid puts the lateral in, and my guy puts a pipe in from my house to the curb.
No, the, the, the guy that wins the bid puts the lateral from the main to your property line.
To my property line, okay.
And then, and then whoever you hire puts in the lateral the rest of the way.
Right, a, a separate pipe?
No, same pipe. Well, wait, 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 I don't know what you mean by separate pipe, yes, you're gonna have to buy the pipe.
Yeah.
And it's going to be separated from this.
It's gonna be.
Until, until he excavates it and sticks it into the bell end.
Right.
Right, but it's a joint.
It's not a separate pipe.
It's two pieces joined together.
Also, that, this should get done by licensed plumber, it cannot be any guy.
Oh, no, I understand that, Dimitri, I I know, it can't be any guy.
I connected for the woods, I got permits for every house.
I I totally understand what you're saying, okay?
There should be proper pipe, it's not any pipe, it should be proper.
Will get inspected.
Everything's gonna get inspected, okay, the next part, at the reasonable discretion of the town of Aligned WPCA. Shall require any such house or building be connected to the WPCA sewer system, sewage system. That, to me, it's a little bit vague to say at the reasonable discretion of the town of WPCA, either we all have to connect or we don't.
No.
Because later on in this.
Eventually, everyone.
Ordinance, you do say, everyone has to connect, so to me, it's a little vague. At the reasonable discretion of the town of Aligned WPCA.
Well, that's, that's, we're gonna keep, well, uh, we, as a group, decided to keep that language.
In twenty twenty two?
Yes, in twenty twenty two.
You know, some things have changed since twenty twenty two, by the way, some decisions you have made along the way, e- especially in regard to. You know, if you have two houses right now, they have one septic, one pipe, that's one lateral. That's a decision that was made somewhere, I mean, I could go through the notes and find it for you if you like.
It's, it's one lateral, uh, we want it to, it's one lateral because the state law, which I believe Dimitri brought in. Said that they can hook up as.
Right, so plumbing code, yeah, yeah, so some things have changed since twenty twenty two, since.
But not that. Not, not that, if you don't have a, an exception. To to that rule, um, there's no, there's nothing in the ordinance that allows a deviation from it.
Well, the, I thought the the WPCA had voted, provided by the plumbing code, that allowed.
No, I'm talking about upon reasonable discretion of the WPCA. That allows us to make exceptions, if it's not there, we won't be able to make any discre, uh, uh, exceptions.
Such as.
You've been, reasonable discretion.
Engineered system that's already in.
Any.
Perhaps, something like that.
And you're not even talking about the number of pipes, you're saying here that you can decide. If my house has to be connected and the house next to me doesn't have to be connected. I don't think.
Yes, that's correct.
WPCA has the expertise to make those kind of decisions, and it shouldn't, I mean, it seems subjective to me.
Right, well, duly noted, I I don't, I don't, I mean, I I'm not gonna bring that up for. A vote, if that's what you're asking.
Actually, I don't see any reason to allow somebody not to be connected.
But there's a lot of issues that go into that, Dimitri.
I would, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't have in my mind what issue could be. That we will say, okay, your house couldn't be, should be.
What if, what if someone has a conforming lot? For the health department, a conforming lot, and they just spent sixty thousand dollars. Now, the only thing they're not going to pay is the connection fee. They still have to pay the assessment, but they won't pay the connection fee.
I used to have a house on this line. That I got, my, my lot was much below the street. And uh, engineering didn't provide my lot on on a drawing. So, when it, it came to point to connect it, I was on a cul-de-sac. They started on a cul-de-sac too high, and I got to have a problem. I went to court, and court. I went to court and court allowed me not to be connected, but. I paid the fees.
Hmm, I understand that.
Right.
I get that.
This is what happened.
I know in Newington. Streets away from my house. It's got city water from MDC. Not connected to the sewer. So, I mean, this, and this is an established, you know, twenty, maybe thirty year development. Whether whether they've connected or not is is not, it does the sewer go by there? Yeah, right in front of the, as a matter of fact, they just relined them. So they, so they, they. The homeowner's chosen not to connect. But they still have to pay the assessment.
They only don't pay user users' fee.
They don't pay the user fee and they don't pay the connection fee.
Or the connection fee, which is.
But it's not a big deal. And they have to pump septic every five years.
Yes, that that's peanuts compared to the connection fees, really.
Connection fees, well, yeah, it it's 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 peanuts to the connection fees until your septic system fails. Then the connection fee is much less.
Yeah, but then you connect. So that may be five years, ten years.
I'm all all I'm saying is is that. They can choose not to, and and all all the all the revenue that we were expecting is going to be reduced by whatever we determine the connection fee to be. They still have to pay the assessment.
I just would like to explain one thing. The main problem, why we need sewer amenities, the main problem. Is. The groundwater is too high. Period. So there is no house that could comply with groundwater. Compli- uh co- compliance. We have groundwater. That septic sitting in the groundwater. So this is the main problem we have. So I cannot imagine engineering system. Engineering system could have so much. Problems after all and expenses during the usage. Like in Providence, I we. I was on a. Meeting of the all states meeting in Providence. And we went to Providence. Uh, houses where they got so much equipment. They got. Filters above the ground. They got. UV pumps. In the ground. They got three thousand dollars expense in a year to service those systems. So. Yeah, if you have system on your house like that. First of all, it's not gonna be allowed in a lot because we have a sewer coming.
It's allowed until it breaks.
Nobody will have right to put it. So. I don't think we have to just think about allowing somebody not to have. Connection to the sewer. I don't think it's gonna happen.
Also, may I continue or?
Yes, please.
Okay, and. Four point five of the ordinance says a separate and independent building sewer lateral. Shall be provided for every building on a building lot. We said we weren't gonna do that. We said that one. We and and reflected in the EDU calculations. We look at the property as one, whether it has. Two apartments in one building or two small buildings on one lot that share currently share one septic system. We were going to look at that.
Is that in, Mary?
Pardon?
What's?
Four point five.
Four point one five?
Four point five. Says a separate and independent building sewer lateral. Shall be provided every building on a building lot. Except otherwise approved by the old line WPC.
Okay.
And I'm saying, no, we already said we are going to follow the building code. That allowed two buildings to share one pipe. That was established by this WPC.
We're gonna keep that. There was there was a reason for that, and I can explain that.
Okay.
We we want to avoid. People putting two homes up. Two full independent homes.
They can't do it.
They can't do it to be honest. You, you don't know that. Yeah, you have the ordinance that says you have clean water funds that say that you can't further develop the the property. Uh, yeah, I don't actually know. Unless you go up. I don't. You on foot spray, you can go up. I don't act, well, it doesn't say that, but. I don't actually know how that's enforced. So. Generally, what happens. In in after this is installed. You'll see. People purchase one, two, maybe even three homes. Tear them down. And put up one large home. On that land. Um, it's it's funny, if you look at. Especially beach type properties. When the homes are small. They become much more desirable with the sewer going through. To where someone could tear them down and build a larger home. Um. Dense, population density generally decreases after a sewer is installed in that type of environment. Not increases. If you go.
Right, that's just the opposite.
If you go, well, it can get any more denser than it is.
I I I don't think you can do it anyway in this town.
So, so I will, I will take a look at that. I mean, it it does say, un- unless it's at the discretion of the WPC.
Yeah, so again, at the discretion of the WPC, which, you know, what qualifies, I I guess I. We question qualifications there. Um, the. You know, if you did keep this, for instance, we looked at the the design, excuse me.
I'm just saying, if you have a whole lot more questions, it would be, I think, a good idea to just submit them in writing.
Well, she she.
I have a few. I'm almost done.
She's and 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 she, I think that she wants everyone to hear the questions.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to help her get an answer. You know.
Well, thank you, thank you. I'm getting there. Thank you. So. And again, like, you know, like, when we looked at the drawings, we didn't see multiple laterals on any property except one, which was Leroy Clark's, which we kinda questioned that because we don't think this workshop actually has water. But we didn't see any double or uh laterals on the sign, so that would be all be uh additional work orders there. On four eight, and I am getting to the end of this, by the way. Whenever possible, the building sewer lateral shall be brought to the building at an elevation below the basement floor. If all buildings in which any building drain is too low to permit gravity flow, which I thought we were, to the public sewer. Sanitary sewage carried by by such a building drain shall be lifted by an approved means of discharge. Meaning. A grinder pump? Because I thought we got rid of that.
No, it's not grinder pump.
Well, um.
It's a pump to to leave the sewer out from the house.
It's a grinder pump.
To reach the groundwater.
It's a grinder pump.
It's a grinder.
But we eliminated grinder pumps by sharing.
Correct.
So this is redundant and not necessary.
Well, no, no.
I'm I'm confused.
I I know you, so so I don't know why we wouldn't keep it in there. It's not applicable to this system. It's not applicable to this system. I don't know about i- if if this is a townwide ordinance. Point of Woods has grinder pumps.
Yes, they do.
Um. I don't know whether Miami Beach or or any of the others will have grinder pumps, but Point of Woods definitely has grinder pumps. And so. The it it's. It. The ordinance. Isn't written. For this particular project. The ordinance is written because we will have sewers in the town.
Oh, okay. I thought it was written for Soundview area B. And. And um.
In Hawks Nest?
Yeah.
Well, it, no, it it describes those as sewer districts, but it doesn't, it's it's a town ordinance. It's for the whole town. What if, what if? Another section of town wants sewers?
Wants, oh, okay.
Well, I mean, if 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 Hall's Road passed and a developer wanted to put sixteen hundred units there, I don't think he's gonna do that with a septic system.
Hmm.
So he would want sewers. He may pay for the sewers, but he would want them.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. And the. Ordinance also talks about. The wells. No water supply wells shall be allowed within twenty five feet of a sewer. And we we talked about this at length before, is the uh the cost to insulate those existing wells built into the cost of the project? Because I know at one point the WPC said they were going to pay for that expense out of the project cost, not make it the homeowner's expense. Is that incorporated in these?
As a matter of fact, um. The the health department and DP have agreed to. Eliminate the double walled pipe that was required, saving Miami Beach probably two million dollars. Um, us. Maybe four hundred thousand and using a Fernco over the bell and attached to the spigot end to seal that joint. So, yes.
So you know where those wells are? You've identified all those wells and what needs to be done?
Five?
I think there's quite a few more, but okay.
All right, well, there's, I know there's no more than nine.
You know, there's no more than that?
Within twenty five feet of our.
Ah, and then the last part of getting to the end of here, only the old line WPC and other duly authorized employees or agents of old line may perform maintenance or corrective actions to the sewage. I'm just asking who as a volunteer on the WPC is qualified or licensed to perform that kind of work? And will they be paid for it? Is there a contingency for that? How is that going to be managed? Um, and then the fine, I'm gonna try to move quickly for you, if you don't mind. The fine. Stipulating, in one place it says if you don't comply, it's two fifty up to two fifty per day. Another place it says it's two fifty per day. It is either two fifty per day or up to two fifty, but somewhere you have to make that correction.
Why?
And, yes, that's what I said. Because it's it contradicts itself in the in this ordinance.
How does it contradict itself?
If you say it's up to two fifty, and in another statement you say it is two fifty.
What if, uh, are you talking about? Uh, I mean, we're we're allowed to fine for different reasons.
It doesn't say that. It just says a fine.
Well, how do, how do you get to the fine?
Okay, each violation of this ordinance shall be a separate municipal offense. Each day. Any violation of the ordinance continues shall constitute a separate offense. Each separate offense under uh each, excuse me, each separate offense under this chapter. Shall be punishable by a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars payable to the townable line. Where I would say it wouldn't be, would be payable to the sewer project, to the WPC in a special fund. For repairs or whatever, not to the town general. You know, deposits. Um, and I would also say, and then earlier it says it up to two fifty. I'm just saying, just clarify, is it up to two fifty? Is this also discretionary?
Why can't, why can't the WPC on a minor infraction find someone twenty five dollars a day?
I think it's just being, not being clear. It's being, saying that I'm gonna find you twenty five, I'm gonna find you fifty, I'm gonna, you know, I I think you have to be. You know, put a stake in the ground and say this is what it is. Because if you find me this and you find him something else, I'm gonna have a problem with it.
Well, I would have a problem if I had the same offense and I was fined differently, but I don't know if all fines are worth two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'm just bringing it to your attention, okay? That that's how it's worded in.
I, and I believe we questioned. The check being payable to the townable line. And I think it has something to do with legal.
Okay. And the lastly, I don't think that the fine should be. Two fifty per day for every day. I mean, there's a lot of things in in your ordinance that say this has to be inspected by the WPC. I don't know who in the WPC. And if we're all volunteers, I'm not sure that there will be somebody there to go there that day and inspect it. And that homeowner shouldn't have to pay a fine because they're delayed waiting for a volunteer to come and inspect something for them.
I don't believe anyone on the WPC is inspecting anything. I think a representative hired by the WPC.
That's what this says.
Well, we'll, we'll do that. I'll have to, I'll have to look. So I, okay, so Mary, I'll have to review to see if we can assign the WPC responsibility to a third party. I believe. It's gotta be in there somewhere, but if it's not, that's a good point.
That's it, that's all I have for for today. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on the ordinance? Is the is the twenty twenty two ordinance still on? Um, on the website? The first veneration. Would you know? Uh. I would say that the. The ordinance that is on the website is probably the one prior to public comment. So it doesn't have public comment incorporated in it.
Okay. I think that's right. I think that's right. I looked at.
Because I I remember the lateral thing coming up. On on that one.
Yeah.
Um.
Erica, I'd like to send you a copy of this so that you can include it in the minutes.
Okay, you can just email it over to me um tonight or tomorrow morning would be great.
I will. Thank you. I'll do that.
So I'm looking for my correspondence agenda again.
Yeah.
All right, um. All right, so we'll go to correspondence, which. Haven't received any. Real correspondence from. That that I have to share with the public. So, um. We'll go to public comment. Does anyone have public comment?
Yeah, this is Bill Randazzo. I do have a public comment.
Okay, Bill, please. Where do you live, Bill?
You got. Pardon me?
Where do you live? Say your address.
My prop. My property's on Hartford Avenue. I actually live in Weathersteal. And.
Okay.
Let me just, let me just start this conversation off by saying. I had a chance to read some articles, like, I don't know, Pinnacle Examiner and different things, and. Having Mary wrote one and the first selectmen had some stuff in there, and I agree with them wholeheartedly. And after listening to Mary tonight ask questions. I'm very, very impressed with her and her knowledge and her concern about what's happening down there. Now. I guess. Starting from the com- comments are great. They're great. I'm gonna give you what I feel and and tell you how I feel, but we can't have a discussion about it because that's part of your. Roberts rules, I guess, that you guys implemented. But. What I'd like to see in the future. Is if we're, if we're gonna do comments. I think it's important. That when you guys start off your next meeting, then, if we're not gonna have. Um, a a discussion back and forth during the comment section, I think it's important. That you guys address those comments that were said here at the e- end of this meeting. Okay? N- next thing is I asked you guys last time we had this meeting here. Is to fix the website's email address to you guys. It doesn't work. You guys have three email addresses, and the only one that works is the one that goes directly to Steve, who's. Says what whatever his title is there. That's the only only one. So I I I'll ask you again, could you please fix that? I think the second or third time I've asked that now. Now. I did talk to Steve, I believe, where we exchanged emails a few times, and I asked him about my personal property. On Hartford Avenue and what I was gonna do or try to do. And. I got three different answers back. And the fourth answer I got back was was very troublesome. And how I mean that. Is what he said to me, he said. Look. I'm not on the economic commission. Well, you know something? You might not be on the economic commission. But. You are on this commission. And if all the commissions together don't work in sync, nothing works. So you might think it's important for you guys to have. Your EDUs put in here, whatever, and and I've asked you multiple times what what my EDUs are. And the only time I actually got a normal answer is when I actually called Mary. Personally to ask her. And. Again, from listening to the conversations tonight, that might have changed again, too. So I'm not even sure about that. So if if I've got to invest four or five million dollars, you guys are leaving me here in a quagmire. And that's not fair. And that's not fair because I'll put that money somewhere else. I don't need to put it there in Soundview. I mean, I've already done a nice job, knocked down buildings. I got one more building to knock down and make things good. But you guys haven't got back to me yet and told me what it's going to cost me for E D U's for that property. So I could go back to my banks and my investors and find out exactly what's going to happen here and what it's going to cost me. And until that happens, I guess I'll just have to move around and, and just do things a little bit differently and just walk away from Soundview because I really don't care. My, my money can make money somewhere else. Um, the second, the next thing I've asked you about is you guys mentioned about an E D U. Could you guys explain to me, maybe you can't do it now because we can't have a discussion in your comments next time? Explain to me, when you guys do an E D U on a building lot, explain to me what a building lot is. All right. I want to know what the frontage, the depth, overall square footage. I think it's a fair question. And, uh, I guess that's about it. Unless you guys have any questions for me. Oh, another thing, by the way, uh, when you guys were talking about laterals versus what goes to a house, uh, re- remember, um, when, when a lateral goes to a house off the main sewer system, all right, there is an area there of around ten feet that the town will own and that's where the lateral goes to, not to your curb. So I, I think correct your, your, your notes there and, and, and maybe you might get this right. I, I've had a little experience doing this, like fifty years of, of building houses, putting in roads and doing different things. So you know, I, I know where the variances are. I know how things work. And I will discuss with any of you guys at any time. You can call me and talk to me. But I'm not getting the answers. Let me just go, you know, um, I guess that's it. I'm covered. I, I covered my comments. I thank you for your time. And, and I do think, I gotta tell you, Mary, I was, I, I don't even know Mary and, and I'm very impressed with her down there because she happens to live down there at the shore and knows a lot of the people that are there. And you've got what Dennis Maluso, I think, and Dimitri that are, that live on the shoreline here too, and they know the people. You guys know what the overall cost of this thing could be, can't be, what it might be and everything else. So when I'm hearing some vague numbers come up and, and Mary asked some very, very pointed questions and I was very disappointed, I guess you, Steve, is you blew her off like, like she didn't know what she was talking about. She ate your lunch. And you can't, you can't even get back to it. So I really do wish you guys the best. And, and I wish you guys had a little more experience about what you guys are doing here. Because if you think D E P is just going to come in there and mandate that there, there's other options that were available ten, fifteen years ago when I lived in Old Lime Shores that, that I put through and that are working today. So any questions, please ask.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, are there any other questions?
Am I, uh, the only thing I want to know is am I going to get answered back?
Bill, Bill, Billy, you've already, you've already exceeded the time, but I let you, I let you finish. I asked if there are any other questions from, I guess, any other people out there.
This is why you're not liked.
Well, that's okay. All right, Bill. Thank you. Um, Erica.
But I think, I think Benny.
I, I do want Benny to talk. I want Erica to mute Bill. If she can. Thank you. Benny, could you state your name, full name and address?
Thirty-sixth quarter.
Okay, thank you.
The fines, I think a property owner should be given a reasonable amount of time to fix the problem before you start filing.
Well, I.
You just get, get them to start filing, you know, then you need to give them a reasonable amount of time to correct the violation, whatever it may be, and then start filing.
All right. So the chair can respond to some of these comments. I'll respond to yours. Um, it says that, that the W P C A can't find you. Doesn't say has to, doesn't say when it's going to begin. I would imagine that a fine would be a last resort after trying to get the homeowner to deal with the situation. All right. I don't think that's the first go-to. Um, it wouldn't be if I were still here. Um, but, uh, it's an, it's, it's a, it's a method to enforce, uh, the ordinance. It's not, it's not, it's not to, if someone's violating, you know, I was already asked today or this week about how, why, why don't we? Why don't we start, um, finding people that don't pump? The same, I mean, we're a sewer avoidance town. Um, if our records are correct and someone refuses to pump, we have the right to find them. Um, and maybe we will start if they refuse to do that. I mean, that's, um, but we'll send out our cards again and, and see where that's at.
Eighty, sixty days, wherever you decide, I don't know. They don't go in, you find.
Now, I'm sorry I had to you, Bill, again, but I can't have you interrupting my meeting. Um, I will get back to you. I'm allowed to, to comment, uh, on some of these things. So you and I went back and forth on emails and, uh, you said that as chairman of the W P C A, I had a fiduciary right to spur economic development. And that's when I said, I don't have that at all. I'm responsible to ensure that the people in this town have safe drinking water and aren't polluting. Uh, if you don't want to build down there, that's, that's fine by me. I, I, you do what you feel is necessary. Um, I also ended up at the last email saying, if you come in and formally ask us to determine what your E D U will be, I'll bring it to the W P C A and we'll detell- we'll, we'll be able to determine what your E D U's will be. I said, I wasn't going to do that because of the way your property is. We would need to see a set of plans or something that shows the building design. Um, as far as.
I showed that to you already. I sent you prints, so please stop.
You haven't sent me prints. You sent me a description. Check your email.
You're too hard.
Check your, check your email.
I've checked all my emails, sent the multiple prints out to you. Mary has my prints. Uh, and I'm sure she could share them with you guys at any point.
Uh, I do, I, I have seen, well, she actually presented them to the Soundview Commission and Frank shared them. And they are beautiful. The design that he has in mind would really bring value and enhance not just Soundview, but this whole town. So we are, you know, we would like to see something like that developed here.
I, I asked him to formally submit the plans so that we could review them and determine what his E D U's will be. I don't want to go out via email as a single person and tell him something that would be incorrect.
Okay.
All right. I've asked you that. I can pull up the email and read it to you if you'd like, Bill.
Bill, just send him the plan. Just send him your plan again.
Copy of your plans again. And if you don't understand them, I'll, I'll help you walk through them.
Thank you. Um, and then I guess the other thing is, uh, we define the lateral, we, we defined our lateral as going from the main to the house with ownership from the property line to the main being the town's and ownership from the property line into the house as being the owners. There's, that's the definition. So I, I don't know.
Town has no easement at all on, on any of the property, like the sidewalk or nothing?
If, if, if it does, it would be on the, on, on the zoning or, or on the pin. I don't know, but easements are different than east, Bill, easements are different than property line. Easements mean that, that, that the town would have the right to go onto that section of easement to repair something. It doesn't mean we own it. It means it's an easement. The property line is still the property line.
That's why I brought it. Exactly. And that's why I brought it up if you didn't hear me the first time. Usually most towns, everyone that I've built houses in developments in, you have a ten-foot easement. So you have electrical, water, gas and different things that the utility company could come in and work on that property without disturbing your property. Of course, they would fix it and bring it back to grade and everything else like, like you're supposed to.
Well, i- if the electric company has, has wire in that section, it would have to be an electric company easement, not a town easement. The town doesn't own the easement. It's the, it's, it's the utility. The town, the, I don't think that's your property life. No. They have. Thank you. That's. Yes, that's, that's correct. It's an easement, but it's still your property. So when we define a lateral to the property line, that is what we own and what you own. It's to the property line, not to an easement somewhere off the property line. If it, if it breaks, if it breaks, if it, right, where you live, Middletown, New Britain, they did that.
Easements are ten feet into a property line. So when a utility company comes in and has to do some work repairs or something else, they don't destroy the road.
That's my front yard. But Bill, Bill, I'm not going to argue, I'm not going to argue over easements, uh, with you. Uh, the, our lateral goes to the property line.
I would say that too, like the town, I had a problem with one of my rental properties and water was coming into the driveway. I thought I had to repair it until a workman told me, no, the apron to, belongs to the town and they had to come repair it. So I think it's the same prin- principle as what Bill is trying to stress. It's not to the property line.
No, it is. It, in our ordinance, if this ordinance passes, you're responsible for your lateral from your house to the property line.
Which might not be the curb.
It may not be the curb. It's to the property line. There may not even be a curb. Whatever your property line is, is what you want.
Just clarification because I, I understand what Bill's talking about.
I understand what Bill's talking about.
You know, down the road, when they're not here to explain these things, Steve, when you're no longer a part of the W P C A and someone else has to come in, we have to make this as clear as possible.
It's clear. It's clear. It's to the property line. How?
It doesn't, it doesn't get any clearer than this.
It's just like, so if my property, so in my house, I have a sidewalk, right? I'm not responsible for the sidewalk.
Responsible to shovel it.
I shovel it, but I don't have to repair it. I don't have to repair it.
No, you don't have to repair it.
So, all right, uh, let's just move on.
You don't have to repair it. Okay. Which, what, it's, the town has decided that you don't have to repair that, that they would.
Because they own the sidewalk. I don't.
Right. And I own the ladder to the, to the property line. If it's, if, if the lateral goes under an easement, you still own the property. It's still yours. I mean,
The easement is just granting permission for someone to do work on it and they're responsible to repair that area in the easement.
Okay. Well, you guys are in the trade, so I'm sure you know better than I what's clear and what isn't clear because you're all in this trade, right?
And, and, and if I, if I may say something, I can't wait for one of you guys to dig up a main road and, and a town, the town or the W P C A is going to come in and say, I'm going to pay for that.
I have no clue what you're talking about, Bill. But I'll tell you what, Bill, I, I dug up seven miles of road in, in Middletown. I put in seven miles of sewer, seven miles, well, not seven miles of drainage, drainage and water line with, with laterals and, uh, services, uh, water services to the curb, um, to the property line, wherever it was. Sometimes it's ten feet in, sometimes it wasn't. Um, I've done this actual physical work for thirty-five years now. I think I know what I'm talking about, but maybe I don't.
Well, actu- actually, y- you, you're right. You, you said the right word. You think you know what you're talking about. Let me try to explain to you something. If, if the water line is damaged, the lateral is damaged from the, from the main trunk in the road to the street and they have to go into the street now to fix that line. That person who owns that house, per your rules, is not responsible for the street, not responsible for any curb reabu- what, readjustments. The, the, the town or the W P C A will pay for that.
That's correct. So you understand the ordinance?
That's, that's all, uh, that's all I'm asking you. That was a simple question.
That did sound like a question, but yes, regardless, that's correct.
The same question that Martha had at the last meeting. When it came to this ordinance applying to the P V As, when you say that the town, therefore, as Bill is trying to explain, would own going in and repairing whatever damage to the infrastructure in the road. Is that true? If it's true also for the P V As? And she wanted a, a clarification from an attorney on that point. Is so.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's, that's good. That's a good thing, but I would imagine that the entity that's managing the whole system in the operating and maintenance agreement, whatever entity it is, whether it's the old line W P C A or some other corporation that, that's formed to manage the system and collects the money for, uh, repairs and maintenance that whoever that is, the money comes from the repairs and maintenance from everyone. So most likely that entity would, is, quote, the town, would pay for any break because everyone's contributing to that.
Any break like over an old line shores? Is that what you're saying? Cause I think that was Martha's.
Yes, yes.
And so we got a legal opinion on that. That's what.
Well, I don't know. I, I don't know. We're getting a legal opinion. I, I told you, the thing's in for review.
I know that's what she was asking you last month.
Yes, I, I understand the question. Um, it's in for legal review.
So we don't know.
So we don't know.
Hmm.
Uh, so anyway, I got transformed. Any other public comment?
You're, you're going to need a company to maintain the pump station. They come in once a month.
Yeah. So, so the.
You're going to need someone for jet riding if there's any backups.
We, we have gotten, we have gotten quotes from the town of East Lime to, to maintain our system after it's built. They're, they're old. Everything.
They're going to do the bioxide.
Everything, everything. They, they will be contracted to maintain and run, operate the system.
Tussler Mechanical. Now it can.
Is that Tussler Mechanical, really? Isn't that a company? Did they do some of the bid? Oh, wow.
No, that's.
Did, did they win all of the bids?
Fleet, G A Fleet? I doubt it. I mean, they do, but they don't mean, they, well, they do service, but um, usually it's, it's an outside entity. I mean, New London's, London's, uh, uh, whole system, their whole sewer treatment is that their sewer treatment facility, their pump stations, their, their laterals, their, their sewer mains, uh, is, is managed by Viola. Is it Viola still?
Violia.
Violia still. I mean, it's an outside company that gets paid sixty million dollars a year or whatever. Correct, correct. And as I said, we, we've gotten quotes from the town of East Limes, W P C A to manage and operate our system. But we will get other quotes, I'm sure, but that was a extremely viable, uh, uh, thing. So if there's no other public comment, um, could we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting's adjourned, nine o'clock. Thank you, everyone.